All right, so we are at 6 o'clock and we have a limited amount of time and we've got a lot of information to cover. So I think we'll go ahead and get started. I want to, well, I guess officially, we need to call this order, right, Russell? So I'll turn it over to you.
That's correct, man. Okay, let me take the roll. Councilmember Albretton?
Here.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Pazinski?
Here.
Mayor Hartman?
Here.
Mayor Bright Cruz?
Here. Very good. All right. Once again, I really appreciate everybody that has been able to join us. As you're aware, we had a significant issue, significant drain, rain, storm issue in November that really strongly impacted the ranches. And while we know that we live in an area that will always be impacted by storms, it was kind of a wake-up call to see where we were at, what we could do to improve it. And to understand a little better, we had a lot of questions from our residents on really what happened, why was, why was it that we saw so much water all over town? And so, and there's some good reasons for that. And so, we wanted to put this item together so that we could provide really two things. One is some answers for our residents so that they could get a better understanding of what it is that we are experiencing and why we're experiencing it and how the drainage system as a whole works and pulls everything together. And then the second thing is we wanted to provide some, an opportunity for residents to respond back and forth. And to be able to really focus on if we could get some ideas, we don't expect to get any solutions tonight, but we do hope to get some ideas that can move us towards solutions. And some things that are improvements, we'll never, we'll never be able to take on a storm like we did in November and not, not have flooding. But hopefully, there are some things that we can do to help protect our animals better and perhaps move the water out a little faster. So that's, that's kind of where we are. Before we get started, let me go ahead and first, let's do the pledge to allegiance to get us going. And then if I could just have all our guests just introduce themselves, I would appreciate that. So let's do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great. Thank you very much. And thank you for our guests. Let me just kind of go around real quick. And so, from South Florida Water Management, I think we have a couple of folks here. Lorraine Mayer and Sue Lynn Kirkland, is that correct?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Lorraine Mayer. I'm the regional rep for the South Florida Water Management District here in Broward County. And some of my colleagues from West Palm Beach are here, so I will have them introduce themselves in this order. Sue Lynn Mattel, and I believe T B is on the line as well.
Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is Sue Lynn Kirkland. I am the Office Chief for the Office of Operations for the South Florida Water Management District.
Awesome. Great.
Good evening. This is Mattel Ansar. I lead the Applied Hydraulics Section out of the South Florida Water Management District.
Thank you. Thanks for joining.
Good evening. This is Taber Desaline. I'm the Section Leader at Operation Hydraulics at the Hydrology and Hydraulics Bureau in South Florida Water Management District.
Wonderful. Great. Thank you all for joining. We really appreciate it. We, whatever we do, we want to make sure we partner with you all to make sure that we're all working in coordination. So thank you. Okay, I see Kevin here from South Broward Drainage District. Kevin, if you just want to say hi?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, council members, members of the public. Kevin Hart, District Director for South Broward Drainage District. A pleasure to be here tonight.
Great. Thank you, Kevin. Thanks for joining us. And then from Central Broward, we have J C and Aldofo.
Good evening, everyone. This is Jay Selby with Central Broward Water Control District and also the District Engineers here as well.
Hi, good evening. This is Adolfo Gonzalez. I'm a civil engineer with Craven Thompson and Associates and the District Engineer for the Central Broward Water Control District.
Okay, great. Great. Thank you all for joining as well. We really appreciate it. Appreciate the time. I think that is all of our guests from outside the town. Did I miss anyone? That is, I think we got everybody. Okay.
Sorry, Mayor.
All right, awesome. So at this point, what I'd like to do is turn it over to our town engineer, Rod Lay, who has done some great work in kind of responding to this and also doing some, some research and kind of putting together a recap of what happened. And he's prepared a presentation for us to see. So Rod, let me turn it over to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. And just for the record for the town, yeah, Rod Lay, the town engineer here. And also, we have Emily Assetti, who is our Community Services Manager as well.
Great. Yeah, thank you.
So I'm going to start the screen share just really quick. Okay. So thank you very much, Mayor, for this opportunity. It's, I think it's a great opportunity for all of our partners to get together and talk about some of the drainage issues that we're facing as a town. And just thank you to all our partners, like you already hinted at before. It's just without their help and without their partnership, we couldn't really do some of the things that we're wanting to do and proposing to do. So thank you to all of our partners as well. So Southwest Ranches has a three-tier drainage system. And the primary drainage system is managed by South Florida Water Management District. And they are essentially in charge of the C-11, which is our primary facility. Our secondary drainage facilities are managed by our special districts, which include both South Broward Drainage District and Central Broward Water Control District. And then our tertiary drainage systems are the responsibility of the town and private landowners. As you can see here, South Florida Water Management District is one of five different water management districts in Florida. Some of the responsibilities are highlighted here. They're in charge of the primary drainage systems and receiving waters. They have statewide regulations and permitting say they have to be, they're monitored, responsible for monitoring of meteorological conditions. They have to do coordination with the National Hurricane Center, and they also coordinate with the local drainage districts and municipalities. Getting a little bit more local and focused here, the role of our secondary drainage districts include the maintenance and operation of the secondary systems. Let me just move this out of the way. Sorry, Mayor, it's in my presentation. They provide water quality and discharge control. They also are in charge of permitting and inspections, monitoring operations of local facilities. They also have extensive coordination with South Florida Water Management District and with us. They respond to resident concerns and are responsible for pre-storm and post-storm activities. So one of the main reasons that we're having this workshop is to essentially recap our November rain event, specifically the magnitude of the event. So we want to put together a couple of slides just to highlight how much rain we actually got. And in some slides, just volumetrically show how much that was. So here's, it's just a graph that shows rainfall annual averages from May through October, which is essentially what we consider our rainy season. 2017, you can see we had over 63 inches of rain. That 63-inch amount exceeded the previously recorded high. And then in 2020, you can see where we exceeded that with a total of 82 inches. And that exceeded the 63 inches by roughly 30%. So on average, from 2010 to 2020, there's some fluctuation, but you can see steadily that the peaks are going higher. This is just a chart that shows some of the historical rain events that we've experienced, again, going from 2010 to 2020. Some of the examples here, you know, Tropical Storm Nicole had about 2 and 1/2 to 5.75 inches. But we also want to highlight, as you get into 2017 and, and current, you could just see just so many more events of 50-year, and in the case of Tropical Storm Eta, essentially 100-year event. Just, just they're occurring at a more rapid rate than before. And just for clarification, 100-year event is not defined as an event that happens once every 100 years. It's essentially an event that has a 1% chance of exceedance on any given year. This is just a general outline of flow through Southwest Ranches. So flow generally goes from the south to the north, and then once it hits our primary canal, the C-11 on the north side, it flows west to the pump stations that South Florida Water Management has at Holiday Park. So we get flow from the, our bordering southern municipalities. They, all that water and runoff goes into their secondary systems, moves upwards through Southwest Ranches into this C-11, and then westward. This slide just shows some of the compiled data that South Broward was able to get. So South Broward Drainage District recorded between 10 and almost 19 inches of rainfall over a 59-hour period. That amount exceeded the intensity and rainfall amount for 100-year, three-day design in basin S8, S9, and S10, which is essentially all of western Southwest Ranches. And even excluding that storm, South Broward already had received over 20 inches of rain in the month of October, which included an event that was approximately anywhere from almost 3 to 5 inches between 10, 30, and 11, 1. So after, in the aftermath of the storm, South Broward, I'm sure Central, South Florida, and we did as well. We just received a lot of calls from residents who were really concerned. One of the main things and topics that consistently came up was if the drainage districts lowered the canals by a foot, then this would have never happened. We would, we would have never had the extensive flooding that we had. So I wanted to show here volumetrically, just a representation of that. So a typical South Broward canal has about a 50-foot width. I'm using Southwest 28th as an example. So if you look at a length from Griffin Road down to Southwest 63rd, you're looking at about 7,600 feet. If you lowered that canal by a foot, and obviously that canal section is trapezoidal, but for the simplicity of math, we're just going to assume vertical walls here. That yields about 380,000 cubic feet of volume. With that much volume, the capacity that South Florida has at their S9 and S90 pump stations to pump out at a rate of 3,380 cubic feet per second would draw down that amount in 112 seconds or 1.87 minutes. To put it in perspective, if we look overall for the town, the town is approximately 13 square miles. When you have that whole 13 square miles and you assume a similar rain event, so a 12-inch event over that whole course of area, that yields over 300, let me get the figure here, Mayor, I'm sorry. That yields over 362,419,000 cubic feet of water. And taking that same consideration of rate for the pumps, it would take approximately 29.8 hours to pump that amount out. So again, just wanted to show that representation of drawing down the secondary canals by a foot. You know, their, their main purpose is really for conveyance and not really for storage. The storage lies within stormwater management facilities and in Southwest Ranches' case, in the actual, you know, property owners' properties. So in this section, we want to allow our partners to elaborate on what they've done and what they did to prepare for the storm, what they've done after the fact. So I'm going to start, if possible, Lorraine, with your group. If you guys can go ahead and, and start just discussing what you guys did for the storm.
Absolutely. Thank you, Rod. As your slide shows, we're responsible for 16 counties stretching from the Kissimmee chain of lakes up in the central part of the state, all the way down to the Florida Keys. I just want to mention also that here in Broward County, we have a field station that's responsible for maintenance of our canals in Broward County. And in Broward County, we have 213 miles of canals and 170, I'm sorry, 127 miles of levees. That's just Broward County alone. That's not the whole district, but I wanted to bring that up as well. In terms of preparing for the storm, what the district has continuously done, and not just with this storm, but all previous rain events is a couple of things. One, we have what we call a 298 Special District Operational Control Call. And that's a teleconference with all of our 298 and Special Drainage Districts to talk about any type of rain or flooding or anything that could potentially raise the levels throughout our district. We had that call on November the 5th. On November the 4th, we had our first press release that went out. And you can find all of this information, by the way, on our website, sfwmd.gov. And if you wanted to navigate, you just go over to news releases and all of its there by categories. You just click on flooding and you will find all of these press releases as well as video messaging that our executive director put out there. So in addition to our 298 control call that we had with our Special Drainage District, letting them know how we prepare so that they can prepare their systems for the event. We also had three other press releases, one on the 6th, one on the 8th, and one on the 9th. In addition to that, one of my roles as the representative here in Broward, I'm also our district's EOC liaison. So I also report to Broward County's Emergency Operations Center and Plantation. And this was all done virtually, of course, because of what was happening with the pandemic. The county also has their weekly board conference calls, which is their Broward Emergency Response Team, and these are usually what first responders. In addition to that, the county has had a Broward County Conference Call with all of their municipalities. So those were just some of the communications that happened prior to the actual onslaught of this rain event and how our district partner, not just with the 298 Special District Drainage Districts, but also with Broward County and their emergency operations in terms of, you know, if they have any special needs or anything that's going on, just to keep them updated on what we're doing as an agency in terms of flood protection. So that's kind of just a snippet of some of the communications that went out. So it wasn't as though this was a surprise to everybody because we were out there at the forefront, letting everyone know what we were doing as a district here in Broward, especially as well as, you know, it impacted Miami and Palm Beach as well, but specifically here in Broward. Those are some of the mechanisms we had in place prior to the storm. And with that, I will turn it over to our experts who can kind of tell you a little bit of what happened operationally during this event.
Okay, thank you, Lorraine, for that introduction and overview. Before I go into a little bit of our operations during the storm, I would like to cover a little bit on our normal operations, what we do day in and day out. Before I get into the specifics of the C-11 basin, as most of you know, we have an Operations Control Center that is staffed 24/7, 365 days a year. There is always somebody on staff monitoring the phones, monitoring the computer systems, monitoring the stages, monitoring the status of the, of the system. We also have a team of water managers who are on call 24/7, also monitoring the system, making operational decisions that are needed to support flood control, of course, with the number one, also for water supply and environmental restoration. Tonight, we're talking about the flood control aspects of it. And I will start by talking a little bit about the C-11 operating ranges and how we operate the C-11 basin in both normal conditions. And then I'll go into a little bit of the, of the storm operations. So the C-11 basin is really split into two basins, the C-11 East and the C-11 West. The S13AW structure is the divide structure between those basins. When we're not in storm conditions, we can pass water from the west to the east through the S13AW and have it go towards the east to tide at S13, which is our coastal station, which is both a gated spillway as well as a pump station. As we get into rain events, that is truly a divide, a divide structure. And we don't want to do inter-basin transfer. That would adversely affect the receiving bodies. So we treat those basins separately as individual basins as rain occurs. And then following an event, if conditions allow, we could then open up that, that structure as part of the recovery to provide some additional relief if it wouldn't cause adverse effects on the downstream side. So a little bit about the operations of the two basins. The C-11 East, again, it's between S13AW structure and S13. It'll be on the right-hand side of your slide there. Our normal operations are 1.4 to 1.8 feet NGVD. Those are the canal stages that we try to keep the water level between, under normal operations. Moving to the C-11 West, we have a few more structures there. We have the S13AW, which is all the way at the east of the, of the western basin. And then at the west side, we have the S9A and S9 pump station. And just to the east of that, we have S381. And operations are a little different depending on whether or not S381 wears, which it's an Overmeyer spillway bladder wear. When that wear is lowered, meaning there's open flows, as if there was no structure there, our normal operating range in this, for the C-11 West canal is to maintain stages between 3.0 and 3.4 feet NGVD. Now, when S9, when S9 pumps under that scenario, it does bring stage down to about 2.0, 2.2. 2.2 is our normal off level. And as we reach that stage, S9 pumps would start to, would start to, start to secure or start to reduce pumping. Try not to go much lower than that. It doesn't really help the basin a whole lot, but it can also do damage to the pump, which we don't want to do because we want to make sure that we maintain those in good operating condition and that they continue to be available to us. The other normal operating range, which is a standard operation, is for the S381 wears to be raised, which effectively makes that a divide structure. In most, in that case, the water levels that we maintain between S381 and S13AW, so most of the areas that were, that would be drained, most of the populated areas that would be draining into the C-11 canal, that normal operating range is 3.0 to 3.6. As we start to approach 3.6, conditions are getting a little bit wetter. So we would lower the 381 wears and go to that 3.0 to 3.4 that I mentioned earlier. And then for the, the smaller reach between S9, S9A, and S381, if the S381 wears are raised, again, it's kind of acting as a divide structure, that western portion is maintained between 4.0 and 4.5. And that's mainly returning seepage that's coming from the west back to the water conservation areas. So that's kind of the, the normal operations that we, that we do. As we come into any significant rain event, we will initiate pre-storm condition or pre-storm drawdown, pre-storm operations as required for the conditions that we have and the storm event that, that's coming. Each, each area may, may see a little bit different operations from the pre-storm perspective. However, the general intent is the same, and that's to move the water, start moving the water prior to the rains come and make as much capacity and conveyance capacity available as possible to the waters that are coming into our system and try and maintain those low, those low ranges to the extent possible. So the, this is the C-11 West slide here. So what we would typically do for the C-11 West for pre-storm and what we did for Tropical Storm Eta is that, first of all, S381 wears would be lowered, which means there's open flow as if there was no structure there. Now, that way, we can maintain the reach between S9, S9A over to S13AW and start pumping that down and keep that pumping, keep that pump down towards the, the bottom of the, of the range of the S9 pump station. And also, in this scenario, S13AW would be closed, which it was as we approached this event. So you can see kind of in the, oh, say in the previous slide, please?
Sorry.
So if you look at the, I guess it's the middle, the middle plot there, it's the, the magenta line. You'll see as we, as we approach the, as we approach the storm event, and it looks like we've got from November 1st through November 8th here, you'll see that we were already pumping to maintain the C-11 canal down near 2.0. You'll see a couple of little blips up. That would be we hit our off limit, secure to reduce pumping, stage rose. We've resumed pumping the additional unit again. And you'll see, you can see some of those pumping changes by looking at the, the bottom, the very bottom plot. And that green line that you see is the S9 pumping and the flow at S9. And as you can see, as we got into November 8th, then into November 9th, when we had the, the bulk of the rain in those couple of days, you'll see the stage at S9 rose significantly. As you can see from the green line, we were increasing the pumping at S, at S9 pump station. And then the orange line, that's also in that bottom plot, you'll see that not only were we pumping all three units that we have at S9, but we also started pumping S9A. And we started the diesel pumps at S9A, and then we added the electrics. And we continued to do that operation with pumping everything that we had available to us until stages recovered. And as we got, as we got into November 14th, you'll see that, that, that's when we started reducing pumping at, first at the S9A pump station. As, while we continued to pump everything we had available at S9, and then as data's further recovered, started to reduce the pumping at, at S9 as well. I will say that it is very unusual for us to need to pump S9A in addition to S9. It's happened, okay, I've been, I've been in the water manager group now for about, it's coming on 11 years here. And I think this is the first time that I've seen all units at S9 needing to pump along with all units at S9A. I have seen a supplement S9 with S9A, but I haven't seen all units running simultaneously, especially for this, for this long that I can recall in the, in the past 11 years. I think that's, that's it for the C-11 West, moving on to the C-11 East. So the difference with the C-11 East is that we have a gated spillway and we have a pump station. We also have the effect, the tidal effect, because it's the coastal structure. The spillway will only, the spillway can only move water when it's got a positive head, a positive gradient from the west to the east. We have automation set up so that when there is a positive gradient, the gates will open. And when there's a, and as, as we lose that positive gradient, the gates will close. And the intent of that is to avoid reverse flow. We only want to have those gates open when we can move the water out of the system. In addition to the gates, we have the S13 pump station. And the, the great thing about that is that it will allow us to pump water when we cannot move water via gravity. What you will see, what you will see here from the, from the stages, similar to the C-11 West, the magenta stage in the middle plot here is the S13 headwater. And as you can see from, from that plot, leading up into, leading up to the rainfall, we were in low range at the S13 station. And we were maintaining stage between 1.0 and 1.5. If you recall, I said the normal operating range there is 1.4 to 1.8. So we were, we were lower than that. We were moving as much water as we could by, by gravity, keeping, maintaining the, the lower end of that, that low range, 1.0 to 1.5. As the rains, as the rains began to, to fall, you'll see that not only were we operating, not only were we operating the, the spillway, but we were also operating the pump station simultaneously. And let me see, S, the green line is actually the, the pump station, the pump flow. And the orange line is the spillway flows. So due to the, and I should back up a little bit and go to the middle plot again. The gray line that you see, kind of a sine, a sine wave, that's the tailwater. So you can see that we were maintaining the headwater lower than the tailwater, lower than the tide. So we couldn't actually move any water by gravity leading into the event. We were maintaining the 1.0 to 1.5 using the We were maintaining those, the one point oh to one point five using the, using the pump station. Um, and then as the, the rains occurred, as stages increased, uh, there was a positive gradient. And as that became available, we were, we were, the spillway was open, the gate was open in addition to pumping. So we were both pumping and discharging by gravity while we had the opportunity with the, with a positive head. As stages started to came, come down, you'll see that on the thir- about the thirteenth. We lost that capability for a positive head and to, and to move water by gravity. So at that point, we were, we were continuing to pump and we pumped the S thirteen pump station to continue uh, to provide as much relief as we could with the, with the infrastructure that's in place. And with that, I think that's about all that I have. Um, any questions?
Yeah, Susan, thank you so much for the information. I think we'll do questions at the end, but yeah, it's very, very insightful, great information. Uh, Jace, if you and, and either you or Duffel can go ahead and go through the central Broward stuff.
Sure. Hi, everybody. I'm Jace Hildy. I'm the district clerk and assistant district manager for Central Broward Water Control. Uh, we cover southwest ranches, uh, portion typically for two sunshine ranches. It's a volunteer road or southwest one hundred and forty eighth avenue to Flamingo Road and Griffin down to Old Sheridan. Uh, our district is about forty-five square miles. We stretch Weston Road to four forty-one, five ninety-five to Sheridan, just sort of quick, easy boundaries. Um, and as stated there on the third bullet point, we are almost exclusively gravity driven with one pump at our office that serves west Hollywood. Uh, mainly going to be Walnut Creek area for anybody that has family out that way. There is a good map, good representation. That area highlighted red is effectively the area of the ranches that we serve. Um, if you look along there, could you go back real quick, Rod?
Sorry.
Long Hancock Road there, S thirty-five. There as well as S thirty-one, that's going to be going out along Malaluka that cuts through Country Glen. Goes up by the uh, I believe Hindu Temple there, Griffin Road and also along Sterling Road out to the S thirty Flamingo Road. Uh, those are going to be the main outfalls for the ranches. Uh, nice thing about the ranches is that most everything is interconnected. So one of the biggest issues we have in that area is, everybody's familiar. There are lots of beautiful trees along the canals, whether they're Malalukas or anything else. So if something does come down, there are multiple exits, so to speak. Go to the next one, Rod, please. Our staff are general, generally out before storms. Um, essentially right up until similar to first responders. I, I know South Broward, South Florida, same way. Uh, you know, just until you hit that sort of wind speed where it's unsafe to be out. But for our staff, we are effectively checking every culvert, every main outfall, making sure uh, garbage cans. Trees, any sort of thing. One of the better things about the ranches is many of the residents, at least in our portion, have been there a lot of years. They have our phone number and nobody hesitates to let us know when a tree comes down. So it, it doesn't take us long to get out there and to know exactly what's going on. Um, and we're, we're generally always doing that before, uh. Another, another one always to look for is uh, silt guards or turbidity barriers, which are those, you know, sort of floating foam blocks, sort of yellow curtains in the canal to keep turbidity down or, or silt in the water. Uh, you'll see us, uh, some of the developers, I know, uh, PHI maybe uh, is not too happy when we come by and just sort of take a machete to one of the ropes tying them up. But in this instance, this is always, this is the priority. We want to make sure the water can get out as quickly as possible. And afterwards, yeah, af- afterwards, uh, just a, just a touch, uh, for this area, I, I know I've talked to a good deal of residents at the ranches in this particular area. Uh, I do see some of them here down around uh, Mustang and Hancock as well as uh, Hollaty and Loray. Um, and, and we really thank these guys for, for essentially keeping us up to date. If nobody's out there, you know, what are the conditions? Yes, we're out there monitoring, but there's a lot of residents along uh, Appaloosa as well. That, you know, concerned about any sort of culverts that, you know, they think this, the flow is moving slow. We can always come out with dye and just verify that, you know, nothing has got stuck. And uh, during or, or just after the storm, you know, we can ensure that that water is moving through there. Thanks, Rod.
Thank you, Jace. Kevin, if you can go.
Okay, thanks, Rod. A quick overview of South Broward Drainage District. Uh, we're an independent special taxing district created in nineteen twenty-seven. We cover seventy-three square miles. We are the largest single purpose drainage district in Broward County. We manage a hundred and fifty linear miles of canal, seventy-five hundred acres of lakes, and we have seven uh, stormwater pump stations. They're all fully automated. When the water level rises up, those pump stations start automatically. Uh, and they all have generator backups so that if we lose power, uh, we will continue to pump throughout the storm. We have one pump station that serves southwest ranches that's located at a hundred and seventy-second avenue and Griffin Road. And we also have a series of uh, floodgates that extend the full limits of the ranches along Griffin Road. Uh, this is a, shows the limits of southwest ranches in our district up there in green. And the symbols up along Griffin Road symbolize our gates and our pump station. Uh, as Rod mentioned before, just want to show you that our canal systems and our facilities along Griffin don't only serve southwest ranches. They also serve a good portion of Pembroke Pines to the south. The basin divide is Pines Boulevard, so all of those properties that run from Griffin down to Pines, effectively I seventy-five all the way to US twenty-seven. All that flows north to the C eleven. And all the central uh, to the east of us also flows north to the C eleven. And then we are discharged to the conservation area through South Florida's S nine, S nine A pump station. Uh, as mentioned, South Florida operates the C eleven, we do the primary. Uh, before the storm, as we do before every major storm, as soon as the warnings go up, we start to lower our water levels. We perform ongoing maintenance up to the storm, making sure all our facilities are ready to go. We're operating, testing our stations, gates, making sure uh, a- all is uh, uh, operational. We coordinate with South Florida. Lorraine talked about the two ninety-eight calls. Uh, they give us great information on their uh, uh, operating conditions. And on the weather, they've got uh, great meteorologists up there to monitor the weather. And we monitor the storm as well on our own uh, in preparation. Uh, we monitor our systems, our levels, making sure that everything's where it needs to be. We do daily checks uh, of our uh, pump stations, make sure there's no blockages. We want to make sure everything is open, free flowing uh, throughout our system. Uh, after the storm, as soon as it's safe to get back out, we uh, do a district-wide inspection. We want to make sure uh, there's no blockages where, when the water's flowing, it's, it's taking with us vegetation, loose uh, debris, and it can block some of the pipes and some of our gates. So we want to make sure that they're all open and continue to be uh, free flowing. Uh, we coordinate with South Florida. I was in contact with uh, Sue Lynn and their water managers throughout the storm, post-storm. On this storm, we did request approval to increase our permitted discharge rates. I think as everybody knows, we are limited uh, on the amount of water that we can pump out into that C eleven canal. Uh, I did request because we had a number of critical areas after the storm. And although we weren't granted approval immediately, as soon as South Florida determined that their system had recovered sufficiently, they did allow us in specific uh, areas to uh, increase discharge on a very controlled level. And we were able to do that to uh, allow some of those critical, uh, critical areas to recover faster as well. Uh, we continue to go through uh, uh, all of our pump stations and gates. When we're running pumps twenty-four, seven maximum capacity, uh, they need constant maintenance. We need to be at those uh, pump stations and gates at least twice a day. We're changing oil, we're, we're making sure that we don't have any uh, breakdowns of our equipment. And, and fortunately through ETA, uh, although we did pump more than we've ever pumped during that time period uh, on a twenty-four, seven basis, our system did perform uh, the way it was uh, intended to perform. Uh, and then we coordinate with the town and we coordinate with our residents. We responded to well over a hundred phone calls, hundreds of phone calls, as you can well imagine. And tried to let the residents know what was happening, uh, what we were doing, what South Florida was doing. And reassure them that we were uh, moving out as much water as we could to recover from this rain event.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you, Rod.
The town has a very engaged and knowledgeable drainage and infrastructure advisory board. And that board has identified and prioritized drainage projects within the town. And the town council generally allocates um, a hundred thousand dollars annually for these projects. And thankfully, the town has developed excellent relationships with South Florida Water Management District, Central Broward, South Broward and various state agencies. And I'm not going to read through this entire list of twenty-five drainage projects and three tis door projects. But I will highlight that out of the twenty-five drainage projects, we received outside funding, materials or in-kind services for twenty of them. So whether cash, materials, design, um, whatever they've given, I just want to publicly thank these various agencies for improving our quality of life here in the ranches. And while we did have to close some roads, these capital projects improved our stormwater system tremendously. And here's a list of drainage projects that are currently underway in southwest ranches that will be constructed soon. What's not on this list are two tis door projects that we expect to get almost two million dollars for from Broward County SRTAX that include roadside swales. And next I'll hand things over to Kevin, who has completed several projects in the ranches that he can tell you about.
Okay, um, thank you, Emily. Uh, I'm not going to read down all, but uh, uh, just like to say, we have had a excellent partnership with the town of Ran- town, town of southwest ranches. Since two thousand and ten, we've completed a lot of, I think, uh, significant, important projects. Uh, main focus is to try to get the water from uh, the internal sections into our canal so that then they can get out to uh, the C eleven, which is the primary system. And uh, we're going to continue to work with the town to try to uh, make uh, these type of improvements.
Thank you, Kevin. So, so, so we're at the point in the presentation, uh, we obviously want to discuss the lessons that we've learned. Um, in the spirit of time here, I, I know we, we definitely wouldn't have uh, some time, uh, mayor to discuss, have a Q and A section. So um, maybe, maybe during the Q and A, we can ask some of our partners, because this is where we were going to chime in a little bit. Um, but I'm just going to speak specifically to the town and what we've learned. Um, so Kevin, Kevin mentioned it before too, it's, it's, I think, what we learned is that we do have to get better. Um, but the, the mechanisms and the systems of, that we have in place that uh, that are in place for the protection of our residents to provide that flood protection. Those systems didn't work as intended, but there was, there was various things that, that we saw that we needed to, to, to fix. Uh, things that we can improve. I think I could speak for everybody here on the panel. Uh, that says that, you know, our, our, our primary focus is always on improving our systems. So specifically, we need to evaluate the stormwater design requirements. I think when developers come into the town, they look at a property and they have to design a certain criteria. Uh, that criteria in Central Broward, for, for instance, for, for site storage is twenty-five year, seventy-two hour for finished floors, it's a hundred year. And as shown historically in the graphs uh, in the previous parts of the presentation. We're just exceeding these frequencies so often now that we really have to have a, a regional discussion with our partners to see if the stormwater design requirements that we have in place are actually still effective. Um, it's not just all positive, there's some cons to that as well, because it will drive up construction costs. Um, but, but that, that conversation, while difficult, needs to be initiated and had. Oh, sorry. Um, we need to review our fill permit process. Uh, one of the things that we saw the most uh, after ETA was people bringing in fill. And uh, we think that, that the documentation that's necessary in, in submitting for and obtaining a fill permit needs to be looked at. Uh, also the penalties that we have in place right now for people bringing in fill material without a permit. Uh, those are things that we need to look at to maybe possibly do stricter penalties. Because there was an abundance of, of residents bringing in fill material without permits. We have to identify high ground for animals. I know this is uh, very important to our council, this is very important to our administration. Uh, and we did find a, a high ground area in the five acres that are owned by the town adjacent to Southwest Metal Sanctuary. Um, during the, the, the entire duration of the storm and after that hair, that area was uh, high and it stayed dry. Obviously some improvements need to be made, but, but that's a potential site that I think uh, was, was very, very um, promising for the staging of animals during the storm. We need a budget for ongoing maintenance of stormwater systems. Uh, as Emily uh, highlighted before, we do get the appropriations for our capital infrastructure projects. But we don't have a line item in our budget to actually maintain our existing systems. Uh, something that we learned from this was some of our systems haven't been cleaned in quite a while. And it's really important to make sure that they're operationally as efficient as possible. Um, we need to utilize a monthly newsletter as an educational tool. Um, just touching back on the fill permit process, uh, it, it's stuff like uh, bringing in material uh, to fill in low areas of, of, of their yards. Uh, a lot of homeowners are doing that because they don't want flooding in their properties. But what they're not realizing is that they're essentially bringing that the water elevation is closer to the primary structures because they're filling in the compensatory stores that they have. Uh, we should continue to seek funding for drainage improvement plans because everything that, uh, that we do, that we've done, all the projects that we've completed. They've all helped a little bit, um, and maybe not necessarily for a hundred year event like we had with ETA. It, uh, but with the drawdown and the aftermath, it's definitely going to help. And ultimately, we need to have and develop a stormwater master plan. So our, Russell identified an opportunity uh, through the Department of Economic Opportunity, specifically Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Program. Uh, he handed that over to our staff. Uh, we looked at it, submitted the application, and we're happy to report that we received two hundred and fifty thousand dollars uh, of grant money to develop a stormwater master plan um, at no match. So that was great. The purpose of the stormwater master plan is essentially to provide long-range comprehensive planning. And this will be achieved through the accumulation of data like topography. Obviously, we have to highlight the areas that we have that are low in the town. Hydrology, again, just mentioning the, the rain events that we have to design to, just discussions that go with that. Uh, soil conditions, looking at uh, how much muck we have out here. So all that stuff has to be considered in some of the systems that we design. Uh, stormwater inventory, it'll help us uh, essentially inventory all of our stormwater that's existing and what we're planning. Um, and it also provide a condition assessment of current flooding and water quality problems. Um, and the main goals really is to create a unified document that clearly identifies this prioritizes and prioritizes areas of the town's stormwater infrastructure. With that, we'll develop a ten-year capital plan. It'll highlight the necessary improvements and associated costs with those improvements. All those things will definitely reduce flood risk. Uh, that'll increase water quality and attenuate attenuation and help us ensure compliance with our comprehensive plan. And, and lastly, I did want to add that uh, every time we submit for, for funding. Um, almost always is uh, there's a question that asks us uh, about whether or not the town has adopted some modern master plan. Usually what we do is we incorporate the uh, town's tertiary drainage map as that formal submittal. Uh, but we do think that having an adopted stormwater master plan will help us secure funding in the future.
One of the main reasons we got this grant is because of community involvement that we outlined in it. And we're going to get the town elected officials, administration, the drainage and infrastructure board, residents, and all the stakeholders on this call, as well as Broward County and South Florida Regional Planning Council. So we're going to do this um, as a collaborative effort.
So we reached a Q and A portion. Again, everybody, all the panelists, thank you guys for participating. Mayor, I turn it back to you for any questions that you have for us.
Awesome. Great. Thank you all for those presentations. It's really good. It's, 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 um, it's really um, a rare opportunity that we get to see something like this from all the different angles and all, how all the teams are working together. So really appreciate that. Um, we do have one other representative that I wanted to recognize that is joining us in the call. Um, State Representative Bartleman is also on the call, and I think she just had a couple comments as well. Robin, thank you.
Yes.
Doing this as well.
I want to thank you for organizing this meeting. I remember shortly after the flooding, you spoke about doing this. And you guys really do an amazing job in this town. So my job is to help you at the state level and. You guys really do an amazing job in this town. So my job is to help you at the state level and. So I want to tell you a little bit about what I have put in in terms of appropriations and an overall flood bill. For your city in particular, we have a Southwest Ranches Country Estate Drainage and Water Quality Improvement Plan. It's a four hundred and five thousand dollar cost that has been put in, it has passed the first committee. There is a two point seven billion dollar budget shortfall, so. I'm hoping that we will get the money, but I'm just putting that out there that it's a tough budget year, but I am fighting tooth and nail for it. There's also the Southwest Ranches sixty-third Street and Southwest one hundred eighty-fifth Way, which is. A drainage improvement plan for four hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. And something different I did, and I have to really say thank you to Kevin Hart, who's on the call, and I like your beard, Kevin. It's a new beard since last time I saw you. He gave me a whole tour, explained to me how everything is interconnected and how everything relates to each other and how the water flows and not. And I toured the pumps and I went to the Everglades with Ron Bergeron and the South Florida Water Management District and Lorraine was there. Thank you very much. And so what I have done and what you'll be happy to know this, Kevin, that I have co-sponsors for your drainage pumps. I've been working really hard across the aisle, and even though this gentleman does not represent Southwest Ranchers or my district, it will impact some of his districts. So Tom Fabrizio has co-sponsored the 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 two mobile pumps. That will be used for emergencies, so I'm looking forward to that. There are other appropriations that I put in, but and I want to share it with you because. All of us are interconnected. So we have a situation in Pembroke Pines. Where the Everglades seeps back into a lake, so when when the drainage district is trying to drain all of the canals into the C eleven. It it keeps refilling, like it's a problem. So there is, I put in a one point two million dollar appropriation for the Pembroke Pine seepage issue. And you'll be happy to know that even though this road is not in your jurisdiction. There is an appropriation for the town of Davie for Dykes Drainage Improvements between Sterling and Griffin Road, which will help all of us. Because it's right, we all drive that road and we know it closes once there's flooding. So all of my appropriations really have to do with this flooding situation. On a bigger scale, I have sponsored a bill that addresses inland and coastal flooding. And what it does is requires the Office of Economic Demographic Research to collect data on flooding. Because we talk about coastal flooding, we talk about inland flooding, but we don't have any idea what the real costs are, and this will help. Create a long-range plan for the state, it will help us apply for grants in the future. From the federal government, and I am very proud to say that there's going to be a press conference tomorrow. I know Speaker Sprouse is committed to flooding. I met with him and I'm excited because a part of my bill. Is going to be absorbed into a master flood bill. Which is great, so I'm really excited about it because it's a great idea, so that means. You know, they're going to start collecting this data, which will help us because. This is, this is not going away, it's a long range. We have to have long range planning and I'm happy to say that I was able to secure a prime cosponsorship from Rep Mooney. Who represents Island Marada and the Keys, so it was a bipartisan effort. So that everyone is working towards the same goal. I met with the Miami. Business Chamber, they're supporting it. Everyone knows. That this is an issue that we're going to have to confront heads on head on. And we're not going to be able to reverse everything that's happened, but we do have to mitigate it and make sure our infrastructure is strong. So I just want to thank all of you. Those are the main issues and. Just thank you to this town. Thank you to Kevin for giving me a great education on flooding and drainage. And I to the residents of Southwest Ranches, I can't say enough about. What your town council is doing. I know I say I have I have a council, a commission, I get them mixed up sometimes. But seriously, the first meeting we had after the flooding, your mayor and your councilman were like, we're going to have to address this. And they put this all together and, you know, they're getting it done. So thank you all very much. I now have to go to another seven o'clock meeting. I'll stay on a couple minutes in case there are any questions for me. Everybody cross their fingers and say a prayer for the appropriations because it's going to be tight. But I think the the bill is definitely a step in the right direction and the fact that everyone is acknowledging that there's an issue. And the governor also put his money where his mouth is in this budget. And I think it's a hundred and eighty million dollars for Florida resiliency, so everyone is really recognizing that this is going to impact us. So thank you all very much. And I will go babysit the animals when you find that little animal space. Because I love, all the residents have the best animals on Facebook. I'm following Little Kisses the goat, that's my favorite goat. Okay, thank you all very much.
Thank you, Robin, and thank you for all that you're doing to partner with us as well. This is, it's exciting to see this whole plan coming together, so appreciate it very much. All right, so we only have about five minutes left and. So I think we're going to need to do a couple of things here. One is to the residents. If you, if you're not able to be heard, please feel free, our my my email is on the website. Please feel free to email me and then I will forward those on to administration. And we will distribute those around to make sure that any questions that you have are answered. And that any recommendations or suggestions that you have. That might be able to improve for improvements going forward, that those get reviewed as well, and I apologize if there's not more time for. Back and forth, but I we had some great information today from a lot of different sources, so I appreciate that very much. So please, though, if you have any any thoughts, any questions, please don't hesitate, please send those to me and I will forward them out. Next, from a council standpoint, I wanted to check on the council to see if they had any questions that they wanted to submit. Yeah, Gary.
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mayor. If I could, and I'll be as quickly as I can, and I'm not sure who to direct this to. But first off, let me say thank you to everybody who's participated in this South Florida Water Management, Central Broward, South Broward. And of course, Representative Bartman, thank you for hopping here and giving us such good news. Here's my question. There is an area north of the C eleven canal. Which is designated as part of the Everglades Restoration Program as a basin to hold water between. US twenty-seven, I don't know what the eastern boundary is, the northern boundary is like five ninety-five. And that project, I don't know if it's, I think it's on hold. And my my question is two-part. One is. Is the project ever going to be underway and under this scenario? That happened, this event that happened last November, how would that have helped us or or would it have helped us with that very large basin? Being able to be to hold water north of the C eleven on the west side? And I don't know who can answer that, if anybody.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Gary. I think that, I don't know, there's, is there anyone that's aware of that that space? Yeah, Kevin, I see your reason.
I'll just share some some quick information. The name of the project is called the Broward County Water Preserve Area Project. It includes, and it's an impoundment. The C eleven impoundment is the area that you described, north of the C eleven. Just on the west edge of Weston. There's a C nine impoundment that is further south, right up along the C nine canal, just east of US twenty-seven. And there's also an important element, too, that that's called a seepage management system that's going to run along. The west side of US twenty-seven, and that's going to be important, too. Representative Bartman talked about the seepage that does impact those western areas of. The town and and the entire, our entire district, so. I believe that it's a joint project between South Florida and the Army Corps. South Florida's met. Almost all their funding obligations through the dedication of land. It it has to, the funds have to be appropriated by Congress. It's at the last level that it needs to get, and I believe that there is planning efforts going on on that. I know there's some. Design work that's taking place. I just don't know the exact status of it. In the event of another storm, I think that seepage management. System would be very, very beneficial to us. And I know that the basis of the plan is that they cannot have any adverse impacts on the. Urban community as a result of this project.
So Kevin, if there's something we can do to partner with that, please, please let us know. Yeah, Robin.
I have an update, but I'm going to have to click back to, I got an update that it is on track to begin in two thousand and twenty-two. So hold on, I just got to find my email, my face may go away. So in January two thousand and twenty-one. The city of Weston was notified by the South Florida Water Management District that the Army Corps of Engineers is on track to begin construction. In two thousand and twenty-two. Because it's going to impact street closures in the city, and I hope I'm speaking about the same project, which is the C eleven impound. It's the, it's the, it's their portion, it's Weston's portion of the C eleven impoundment project. So if they're beginning their portion, that means the project's beginning. So they're going to start, it's a good thing I represent all of you close together because then I get all this information. So they're going to start, they're going to have to start in Weston, start educating the the residents because there are going to be closing. Some of the roads to get this done. So this is exciting news for us. So it's beginning. It is, and I need to flag this email, so I always have it somewhere safe. Okay, I'm glad I stayed on to answer that question. I've been on that one, too. That was the one of the first. One of your residents brought it up, who was on a phone call, and I started looking into it right away. So thank you, guys.
Awesome.
Kevin, you want me to forward it to you, too?
Thank you, thank you, Kevin, for answering that. I appreciate that. I'll yield the floor to somebody else.
Okay. Any quick question? I apologize, the time is so short. And a quick question from any other council member? Okay, awesome. All right, so one final thanks to everyone who joined us from all the different areas. Just not not only for joining us tonight, but for the partnership and for all that you all do. To, you know, keep keep our property safe and our animals safe, and. It's a lot of it is behind the scenes and a lot of it is unseen, but we appreciate you and we appreciate all that your teams are doing. So thank you for joining us and thank you.